All right, Madam Secretary, I'll call this meeting of the Popul Plan Commission to order. Madam Secretary, can you please call and roll?
Mayor Gillespie, Councilman Bowles, Chairman Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Gardner.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Hall.
Here.
Mr. McAlley.
Here.
And Mr. Nelson.
Here.
All right, first order of business is the minutes from September 18th, 2014, October 16th, 2014, and November 20th, 2014. Do we have the minutes, or are they here?
They were sent out to us.
Does anybody disagree, agree, or approve them as they were sent out?
May they be approved as issued.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Pose like sign. Well, that was mine. Okay. All business, we have preliminary plat, Rochester Hills, location Heather Drive. Mr. Duke, do y'all want to show us anything? Any comments? We're good, okay. Mr. Duke, do you have anything that you would like to say to us before we move on with this?
No, sir, just to make sure that since there's been a good bit of discussion, make sure we're clear on, everybody's clear on where you are at this point. You have before you a preliminary plat, preliminary subdivision plat, that was first, was heard at the November 20th meeting. It was read into, a resolution was read, standard resolution approving the plat as presented. And that was held till this meeting. There was a work session held on the 13th, this past Tuesday, in these chambers where there was a chance for members to ask questions of the developer, and then there were some back and forth conversation. Many of y'all were able to make that meeting. If there's going to be any type of amendment or change to the plat or the approval, that would need to be done by amendment, amending the resolution that's already before. Just want to make sure that's clear.
Okay.
Be glad to answer any questions. I think most of you are very much aware of where we're talking about, both developer and staff. We have maps, we can, and aerials, we can pull up and discuss if there's some question.
There is one question. We had discussed the one-way-out leaving, and is this what we are approving? Is this the moving the entrance? Are we, is it going to line up with Heather, or is it going to be moved down? What is the proposal? That's on that page.
Okay.
Line up with D, I'm sorry. Line up with D.
Mr. Smith, what you have before you is exactly what's in your, should be in your packet. There should be.
That doesn't, that doesn't.
Is this subdivision plat.
I don't have a packet.
That looks like this. Okay, that shows. In the subdivision, you're basically dealing with the street.
Mm-hmm.
What you got, you showed me there is actually the development plan for the apartments that are proposed for Lot 1.
Right.
And some question about where that driveway would be.
Yes.
As you read the resolution, and based on what was submitted, this is what you're approving. If there's some amendment, some change, or some stipulation about how that site plan driveway needs to connect to these public streets, then that would be an amendment to the resolution that's before you.
Okay.
If you're happy with this, and you want to let where the driveway ends up be a part of the usual development review by staff and issuance of a permit, then there's really no question. If you want to make where the driveway lines up and how it lines up, as was discussed, then there needs to be some amendment to provide that kind of guidance to staff.
Does anybody wish, does not have it be done now?
That's what he said.
Okay.
Get staff.
Yeah, let me, let's make sure, well, make sure I'm clear. If, if you think something's going to happen based on your approval.
Yes.
Then it needs to be a part of your approval.
Okay.
If you're happy with staff figuring out how the best way that driveway is to be aligned at the time that the building permit is issued, then there's no need for any kind of.
Okay.
Changes. But, so if the Planning Commission wants to have an impact on what happens with that driveway, you need to make that as some type of.
Resolution.
Part of your approval.
Part of our approval.
But if you, the normal process is the subdivision is approved, and then staff reviews the site plan for that apartment, and that driveway is a part of that review. It's looked at by the Fire Department, by the Planning Department, by engineering, and the Police Department, Wastewater, all the departments that have some input, and the Building Department, in that approval. And generally, we try to follow, and we do follow, city regulations in that regard. But if you want to see something different, then you need to make that as a part of your approval here today. Otherwise, we're going to treat it just like we would any other site.
My, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Might I ask for somebody to give me a quick summary of work session, since I missed it?
Absolutely. We discussed different ways that we could approach this property. However, would you say our best summarization is that running it through the extension of Heather Drive at this time is the only viable option?
Okay, short and sweet.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Mr. Duke, there's been a lot of conversation about running this out, two entrances also connecting to McQueen Smith. Ain't cost for it, I apologize. Do we know at this moment if we own the rights to that road? And for sure, do we have the rights to that road? Do you know that?
Okay, the answer to that is, I don't have a definitive answer. I can tell you what I do know, and I'll be glad to go through that. Just for a little background, just for those that weren't at the work session, there's been some ongoing discussion about this piece of roadway that was built with Russell Dewitt Center back in 1988, about whether or not that's a public street. County Revenue Office shows it on their tax maps as public street. Looking back at documents from the forehouse, when Aronoff sold this large piece here to Buford and Huey Gilmore back in 1978, they said, "We expect to have a public street right here, and we expect y'all to build part of it for us." They did not, and it would have been at a time Aronoff saw fit. They had not built it by 1988, when they sold this piece of property to Russell Lands for the Russell Dewitt Center. At that time, they took that agreement that had been recorded in 78, and they said, "Russell, we expect you to pick up and build this street for us, and then it will be dedicated as a public street." Russell, it's not a part of the Russell property. It was left out of that deed, but they did build it. They built it as a part of their development plan for Russell Lands. So, that's everything I know to this point. The developer's attorney, developer's engineer, the County Revenue Office, and I both have all been looking for where this was actually deeded or dedicated to the city, where the city might have accepted it for maintenance. As you know, on City Council, oftentimes, there are folks that come with private drives, and they ask y'all to accept those as public streets. If that were done, if we can find evidence of that, that would have taken care of that. It's possible there may have been a lot of intentions, but may never have been an execution of that transfer. So, I don't know the answer to that completely at this point. The Revenue Office thinks that it's a public street, has represented it as a public street for a good while, but whether or not that's the case, I can't tell you.
So, in essence, at this point, we couldn't say, "Okay, let's connect to that," because if it turns out it's not a public street, we can't use it. And that puts us back to square one again, is that correct?
As I understand it, and I'm not an attorney, and I'm not going to attempt to be right here, but following that train of discussion, if it were never transferred to the city, Aronoff would still own it.
Okay.
Okay? And, but to go with where you're going is, there's nothing that would require somebody that's adjacent to that, or give anybody the right to connect to it, as if they were connecting to a public street.
That's why I needed that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. With that being said, though, that wouldn't have any bearing as to whether or not, as a contingency, we said that the possibility of connection be a requirement made available for future development and the adoption of that street by the city, because it sounds like everybody thinks it's the city, whether it is or not. So, if we left it as a contingency to make that connection, that doesn't mean that six years from now, we have to make that connection, but we just make it a contingency upon passing it, so that if another development plan is to come in there, somebody doesn't want me to talk. I lost my train of thought. If a development is planning to come in there, that that requires another connection, we've already got that bridge covered as far as being contingent, but that doesn't mean we have to make them do it if we see that it's not necessary, or in some way adverse to do so.
Right.
Am I correct? Or did I confuse you?
No, sir, you did not confuse me. What was discussed at the work session is a possibility, and as I understood it, make sure I'm hearing you right, what I think I hear you saying is that if y'all wanted to reserve, say, a 50-foot right-of-way along the western edge of, or between lots 1 and 2, that would give you the right to put a public street up to what, the built street between Russell and Movie Gallery, or Movie Cop, excuse me. You could do that.
Okay.
But you wouldn't, what you're basically saying is you wouldn't necessarily require them to build that street today. You just want the ability to have the right-of-way there for a street.
Yeah, I don't even know that it would, and this may be, again, my ignorance, I don't know that it's a requirement that we have a 50-foot strip of land all the way down that property. If, I'm just saying that we reserve, we make it a contingent for what they want to do. Hold that little piece of paper back up again, please. Where the little, very tip-top of it kind of notches out, if we said that's where the connection is, if we just left that area as contingent upon a connection, so that if we need it, there it is, leave this piece of property as is, because they may come back through and make streets in other directions, but this is, to me, the part that's concerning, because this is where we could make this connection. Would we need to divide that land down with a 50-foot strip? That's not really a requirement, is it?
Well, here's what's, here's what's going to happen by the effect of what you're being asked to do here, okay? If you platted the way it is laid out here, then these all become independent lots, okay? And can all be transferred independently, okay? So, Lot 2 gets transferred, unless there's some kind of deed restriction, or covenant, or something like that, that says that they have to meet some kind of access reservation, okay? Then you lose the ability to influence that. Creating the right-of-way is what I see as being the surefire way of making sure that it's shown as being available. Otherwise, whatever connectivity you have through there is going to be open to being a cut-through through somebody's development. If you had, if you had this as access, unless it was solely for the, for an apartment complex, then you would want to make sure it's public, because it's like people cutting through a shopping center parking lot. You may not want them to do it, but they'll do it. And if you want it to be a legitimate pathway, you want it to be public.
No, it's a 50-foot right-of-way going down the between lots 1 and 2. All right.
And essentially, that would be going back and recreating the sketch plan as it was originally shown in 1992, in essence. I mean, it's not the exact location, but that's essentially what you had there, is you had a right-of-way that went up, connected off of essentially this road, went this way, and then there was a 9-degree intersection right here that went back.
Mm-hmm.
To where we're, what we're calling Heather Drive now. So, if you're trying to reserve that as a pathway, Chief, you're looking at, my best recommendation would be that it be right-of-way. Otherwise, it, I mean, you can talk about it being there for these two lots, and only these two lots, but I see a potential for cut-through traffic.
I agree, especially if you make a 50-foot contingent all the way down to Heather, and that's not what I'm trying to accomplish here. I'm trying to accomplish the second access to this property, but not create another north-south street, which is exactly what you'd do if you said, "Give me 50 feet." You're going to make a major intersection there, and that's probably not a good idea. But access to that property is what I'm referring to. If we can maintain the ability to make a connection to that property for whatever future development may possibly come there.
Access to.
Just to the apartment.
Access to lots 1, 2, and 3? Is that what I'm hearing?
Sure.
Okay.
But then there would be access from Heather to lots 1, 2, and 3, and then thus making it a bypass public street. What he's proposing or saying that you don't really want people driving through there, using their private property for public access.
Well, I guess what I'm also saying is, once these lots are created in this fashion, by division, then these are freestanding lots, just like any residential subdivision, okay? Lot 3, they're basically making a concession that it, and you are too, by approving in this fashion, that it is not a developable lot.
No.
Okay, because they've already made references to you that it is essentially wetlands that they don't intend to develop. So, I don't have any problem with it being freestanding, but Lot 2 is a separate lot. It could be transferred independent of these apartment developers to somebody else. And so, you would be basically telling them, "They have to possibly go out this way." I know where you're going, I just think it's cleaner if it was a right-of-way, but I also hear what you're saying is you want it only available to... What you're talking about might actually be accomplished by just talking to them in the development plan process on that individual lot, but if the.
Yes, I might, and I don't want to disagree with you, Mr. Duke, but during the work session, they actually referenced about coming back in time and asking that that piece of property be rezoned to accept apartments.
Right, I know.
So, I mean, that's how I understood it the day before yesterday.
And I don't think we're disagreeing, Mayor. I think what I'm saying is that that may be their intention, but once you approve it as a separate lot, and it gets platted as such, there's nothing that requires them to hang on to it. If they can find somebody that'll buy it, they can transfer it to that by simple sale, never comes back to this board. You know, it, so I guess what I'm saying is, what you have to look at as a commission is what happens with that lot regardless of who owns it. A lot of times, we get on subdivision, we talk about who's here before you, and what they have in mind for that property, and a lot of times, we're really trying to push on to look at, "Okay, what are the possibilities?" It's kind of like zoning. You have somebody standing here before you saying, "We're going to build this, and that's why we want this zoning." Y'all always look at the broader picture of that zoning, what's allowed in that, because once you zone that property.
Right.
It's open to whatever is allowed by right in that property, on that, in that classification. The same is true here. Once that lot is platted, it's available for whatever they wish to do, within the other parameters, as far as zoning and development plan and... Anyway, I understand where you, I think I've landed on where you are, and I agree with you, you could certainly make that as a contingent at some later date, that that be available. To me, that wouldn't be, nothing you're doing here would preclude that, unless y'all want to just make sure that it's very clear that is the wishes of the Planning Commission. If you want to make that very clear.
Do we have that option?
Yes.
Is there, is there an amendment to the resolution before us now?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to propose that we amend this to read it with that piece of land that we refer to as the Russell Street.
Yes, sir.
Be made available as a connection to future development, not necessarily contingent upon the development of the apartments, but for future development as a whole.
Okay. Are we doing it by right-of-way straight through to Heather, or do you want to... He's wanting to make sure that that one, that that access be available at some point in the future?
I don't know, I don't think that, somebody else may have meant it again to come back with a right-of-way, but I don't see that that's necessary.
Okay. You're wanting that particular piece of property to be available to them at some point in the future?
Yes, and I apologize for not knowing how to word it correctly, but I think the intent is that we have a north entrance into this development area if it is needed in the plan review process.
Okay, there's a motion that that be a north entrance into this development at some point in the future?
I think the motion is that not to a north entrance, but for the right-of-way to be held.
Right-of-way to be held to the north entrance.
To the north.
To the north. Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there a second? There's been a motion and a second that there be a right-of-way to the north entrance to be available in the future, as part of this amendment, as part of the resolution.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I could, hearing your discussion, y'all are certainly welcome to make that amendment. The only thing I would ask is that I completely understand that, because that's going to have ramifications on how we deal with this property going forward. So, Chief, you're talking about making sure that regardless of whether that's deemed to be public already or not, that it's remain available for access to this property?
Yes, sir, because it's my understanding that if we determine that it's not necessary, then we don't have to require it, but that we just have it available if it is necessary for future development. And it's legal to do so because of who owns that street.
You don't want an apartment backed up to the back of it, and you want to have a, it's somewhere it can be used.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Now, we do this, make a right-of-way to a dead end as far as we're concerned right now.
Right.
Now, what happens if we can't get that property to go into Cosford Road? We don't have access to Cosford Road at this time, do we?
That is unclear.
Now, what we're doing is something certainly that may be impossible for us to do.
That is true.
I mean, you know, down the road, they say, "Wait, wait a minute, we're not going to allow you to do that. You don't have access to Cosford Road here."
Okay.
Put that in a plain, everyday language, throw the grass on the ground so I can understand what you're talking about.
Mr. All, I think that you're.
So, all the goats can eat some of it.
I agree with your assessment. I mean, what you're asking is that regardless of whether it's determined to be public already or not, that that be available for use by these apartments. But make sure I'm clear, you're not requiring that as a contingency that they use it.
Correct.
That it be available.
This is just. This is to reserve right-of-way, so that if we determine at a later point in time that it is going to be a requirement for access, for city ordinance, for fire code, or whatever the case may be, that we, it's stated that we can at some point in the future require that entrance to this property if it is legally able to do so, and there is a need for it. If we don't do this now.
I think I had the floor.
Go, go, go right ahead, go.
I'm not, I had my answer.
Okay.
Who in right mind would, a developer would go in there and either buy that property, put a housing project, I mean, apartment complex in there, not knowing whether he's going to be able to get out to the street?
We, they will have access to Heather Drive.
But not.
But what we're saying is, leave the, I believe what Chief is saying is, leave that access available if the city owns it, not to impede that entrance by placing a building on top of that entrance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I.
But that's where I understand it. But right now, we, you know, the, you know, there's a, I guess there's a motion for that, to leave that open, is where we are right now?
Chair, I got the answer I needed.
Okay.
Clarification, thank you.
Okay. Do y'all wish to say anything at this time? What we're saying, the best that I understand, is that the entrance by Russell, if it is city property, it be left available for future development as a public road on lots 2 and possibly 1, but if you or someone else goes in and puts 35 to 40 more apartment complexes in Lot Number 2, that we have a relief valve or another road that can go out by Russell Dewitt Center. Two Cosford Road.
Just try, just try and reserve the right-of-way.
Just to reserve the right-of-way.
That may never happen, but try to reserve the right-of-way. I mean, you're going to have an entrance to Heather for the next.
Are you suggesting that part of the land that we are buying from Aronoff, that we, as part of the development, we give that right-of-way to you now?
Not now, but.
What if it gets used?
What we got? Yeah. I would say that the, what is it, the top part of the Lot Number 1, the northern corner of Lot Number 1, is that what you want, Chief?
To be honest with you, I'm not exactly sure, because I can't tell what lot, whatever. If we can have a contingency that where we have an access from the north, however that to be worded is what I'm asking for. I don't know the legalese on how to word that, and for that, I apologize. I just don't see why we shouldn't have.
It looks like a lot of your area is on Lot Number 3, if that's where you want it in Lot Number 2. Are y'all buying the whole thing? It's not necessarily Lot Number 1. It would be more the top part of Lot Number 2 and Lot Number 3 would be where.
That's, yeah, that's correct. The question is putting in for a possible future easement.
Which a lot of, I've seen.
I'm not sure. How much of a future easement are we talking about? Who's going to pay for that connectivity if we, you know, it's likely that we sell lots 2 and 3. Maybe we get the rezoning, but we have to, and we talked about this in the work session.
Right.
We just don't know what's going to happen with those lots. And maybe they're single-family.
And that's my whole point.
Yes, and that's our point, too, that if it is single-family, then we might want that to be a public street, or entrance into that particular area.
Mr. Chairman, what, tell me what that looks like.
Okay.
I mean, what is that public? I mean, what does that public street look like?
Or well-access to Lots One, Lot, perhaps it would just be, from what you're saying, Dallas, is just access to, to, and to Lot Two, to the lots, is what he's wanting.
Wouldn't you have, if it's a, if it's a city street, and help me on this, but if it's a ci, if it's a city street and it abuts the property...
Mm-hmm.
This, this is, I guess the only way the city has access to those lots are to have some type of easan, and I understand what you're, Chief, what you're looking for is for safety issues and an entrance in and an entrance out to, but I'm just not sure, again, I don't know what that easement looks like.
Mm-hmm.
Today. And I understand, I understand your need for it, or, or your wanting for it, but for us, I'm not sure what that means without, and, and would this be any sort of covenant on Lot Two and Three? Meaning if someone was to come in and purchase Lot Two and Three, they would be required to... And if, if, if they were...
How much of a...
The $200,000 to come across, all of a sudden, for us, devalues the price of that property.
Yeah.
It's the other side of the story. I'm not trying to, you're looking out for the welfare and the safety of the public.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Comment I'd like to make, or, I mean, there does seem to be a lot of questions, a lot of doubts on exactly who actually owns the, the stretch of street there right beside Russell.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think that's a very important question that, um, that should be answered.
Okay, well...
If I could, I, I think maybe we can simplify what Mr., what Chief Johnson's asking for.
Okay.
Um, you're not necessarily saying that you, you want to use that or that you will ever require it, but you just want it left as an, as an option.
Yes, sir.
Available, that, um, development of the site doesn't necessarily close it off and make it so that there's not possible to create access through there.
Exactly. We need to leave the option open to making a connection there, and how, how you word something along that one, I don't know, but I just know that if, if we don't say somehow or other now that we're going to leave this option available, then we may never have it and regret it later. Otherwise, whatever happens here will dump into Heather and in that community and not have an option to go out any other way.
Yes, sir, I, I agree with you, that, that if you're looking to leave that open as an option, then you need to, to say that, but I, I'm trying to make sure we get it in the format.
And, and I, again, I, it's like I told you, I apologize for not knowing how legalese to word that.
No, I, I think we're, we're there. If we're leaving that regardless of its, regardless of how it's defined, uh, it, discussion I was having with Representative from Aronoff, if it ends up that they own it, which I think everybody's beginning to land on that is that they still own it.
Okay.
Then, you know, I don't think they're going to have any problem with who ends up with that piece of dirt. Uh, I would imagine Aronoff would not want it orphaned there somehow. If it's not a public street, I think this body really needs to look carefully at what you're doing to create it as a public street. If it's not a public street today, you might want to look real careful at the implications of that, but leaving it open is a possibility. I, I don't see any, and, and I don't see any problem the way that it's been worded.
Okay. All right, there's been a motion and a second. Do we know the most? Yes, sir. Do you, do y'all have anything to...
(inaudible).
Are we good? There's been a motion to leave it open as a...
Option.
Option in the future, uh, for future developments of Lots Two and Three and One, and there has been a second. All in favor? Signified by raising your right hand. All opposed? Signal like sign. Okay. Does that carry? Doesn't carry?
Your amendment carries, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. All right. That is now, as the amendment... No, go ahead.
I have my question. Uh, the, as, as we see in, in the proposed where the apartment is and the D Drive, I mean, the connection from the apartments, uh, to Heather being across from D, that actually crosses the line of Lot Two. What have we done about, are we just talking about selling them separately and so forth? How are we managing that? And I say that because I don't want us to get stuck in, okay, it's all on Lot Three and it has to go in Heather Drive on back farther down the way, so where are we with that?
That, we're clearly being some type of, and that's a question we've asked at this point in, in the review process. So what you would end up with there is you'd have to have some type of easement for them to cross Lot Two. That's, that's easily done, it's done often. If they own both lots, they can basically handle that.
Okay. All right, is there any discussion on any other concerns?
I have another amendment. I'd like to amend the motion as it is, that, that, that corner of Lot Two be part of, of this and such that, and also included in that, that the, the exit from the apartment to Heather Drive be a right-out only.
How do you get into it if it's right-out only? Just how to carry out? I mean, the exit is right-out only, there's going to be an entrance somewhere?
Yeah.
Okay. The entrance is going to line up with...
We talked about it at the last meeting.
Yeah, with the entrance being the same. Okay. I think I understand what you're saying. Go ahead.
I'm just going to ask, there were, there were a couple of different options presented. Do y'all still have those? Just to make sure that we're, we're talking representationally about the right one. And I apologize, y'all are placing contingencies on here that we have to implement.
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure that we are clear on what you're requiring.
I believe they had one last time that was acceptable.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
If I might make a, maybe a rebuttal to your comment.
Yes, sir.
I think we call that the whale tail.
Yes, sir.
And I am totally not in favor of the whale tail.
Okay.
I, I think that's just another way for us to get, we're creating a problem...
Okay.
By trying to piecemeal things together to, to fix a perceived problem.
Yes, sir.
So, um, I just, I don't want to be...
You, you are, okay.
Connected with that.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Uh, I apologize, I, I jumped up too fast. There was not a second on Mr. McCauley's.
There is not one.
Okay.
You are correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you ask for a second?
Uh, do I? Thank you. Do I have a second on Mr. McCauley's, uh, motion?
You're all pretty well confused.
Yeah, well, Mr. McCauley made a, made a, made a motion to, to have a, the entrance be down where it's only exit and it does not line up with, help me, D Drive, and it, it only be a, um, right-only, and I take it the entrance would be right-only as well. I don't, I don't know, there was an example, the ma, well, the exit, but the entrance would be, I guess the entrance would be somewhere right down there too.
We just didn't like that.
Okay. The entrance would be close to it.
We had one, they had an example last time over here.
They did, and it was a, what the mayor is calling a whale tail, and I take it you're not going to get the second from the mayor, and so...
Brad Smith.
Brad, how you?
Okay. Did the motion...
Uh, it has not yet. I have not had a second yet, but I was letting, he was going to comment, and I was letting Brad comment on it.
We need a second.
We do need a second, well, is there a second?
If you don't get one, discussion's over.
For discussion?
Four more.
Yes, sir.
We discussed something, not a second.
Well, that is, I was looking for a second.
We have a second.
Well, I don't have one, and so we are going to move on. Is there any other discussion on this matter?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, bring me back up to speed, but basically what we're talking about now is what's, um, the, the roads that Heather and, 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 was it Dale Drive?
Yes.
D Drive.
D Drive.
And that's what's properly before us now, correct?
That is, the, as it is written and as it is in our example, is what, is what the proposal is before us at this time. It's going to come out lined up with D Drive or however Mr. Duke wishes to, um, do it in his expertise in, in design, or between him and Mr. Anderson.
As, as I sort of mentioned before, you know, we really have three entities here that we're supposed to be, um, looking out for.
Correct.
Just interest of. One is the citizens, two are the businesses...
Correct.
And the third is this entity called the City of Prable.
Yes, sir.
And there have been a lot more questions brought up here.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, I think the question that got brought up was that, anyway, at, at the work session about actually the, the drive that comes out there by, by Russell.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, then we have a, you know, an amendment there and, and, um, I still wish we had the answer to actually who owns that drive beside Russell.
But we have left it open that, that, a, as amended before us, uh, if we do own it, then, then there's a reservation that perhaps in the future that it can be used as access.
Okay.
However, we, we're going, we're going to go forward with us at this time.
Okay, well, for the record then, without that additional information, I just don't see that how I can vote either way, so I will probably be abstaining from this.
Thank you, sir.
From this vote.
Are there any other questions or comments? We ready to vote on this, Mr.? All right. Calling for a vote. All in favor of the motion as amended? Signified by raising your right hand? All opposed? Like sign? How many do we have, yes? I did not say.
Six.
Six.
Six to one and all in.
All right, it passes. Is there any other business, Mr. Duke?
No, sir, I have no other business.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.